I'd like to call the fifth meeting of the mayor and city council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the floor.
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
I see Mr. Cole's on the, um, on the screen. Um, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
There's Mr. Cole. All right, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Sidnor?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
Mayor Mo?
Here.
Uh, moving on to approval of minutes. The agenda item number three, approval of minutes of the second meeting on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The work session on January fifth, two thousand twenty-two, the third meeting on January tenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the fourth meeting on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion. President, make a motion and approve all the notices you read in the record, sir.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Question? Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. Moving on to agenda item number four. Report of the mayor and city council. Councilman DeWalt, I'll start with you.
Good evening, everyone, and happy Valentine's Day. Uh, thoughts and prayers go out to the, the death of Joni Kramer, who was a former, uh, city of Laurel police officer and a motorcycle officer. Um, she served our community from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen eighty-three. Um, I didn't know Joni, I didn't, but I heard a lot of great stories about her as policemen and I do, we tell a lot of stories. And she seemed like a really, really great person. Um, uh, thank you, Christian Pooley. On two eight twenty-two, myself and Brian Coyle were able to get some really good wooden planks to help build benches and picnic tables at, uh, Laurel Elementary School. And it was, uh, with the cooperation of, uh, Christian Pooley, and we thank her for that. On, uh, uh, two-ten, uh, the Laurel Historical Society virtually had a food and faith uh, program at Saint Mark's, uh, church. And, uh, it focused on the food and faith, uh, in the area of the Grove. Uh, thanks to moderator Sandra Johnson and Jackie Jones did a wonderful job. And, uh, it was great to see Mrs. Mildred Awkward, who I believe is ninety-four years old and she, who shared her old oven pound cake recipe. Uh, then on two twelve twenty-two, uh, Chief uh, Hamel, along with members of LPD and Laura Gwinan and, uh, Karina from Lars, assisted with them and handed out close to a hundred and thirty-two brand-new winter coats to children up at, uh, Laurel Elementary School. Karina is just a great asset to Lars, and, uh, she really, uh, is dedicated to, uh, uh, picking the children most needy of those coats. And Laurel Police, uh, got those donations from the, uh, Knights of Columbus, and they do that every year for the coats for those kids. It's a great, great job that they do. Uh, I'd like to bring up back in December, I introduced, uh, at a work session about the House Bill six-nineteen, which is a speed monitoring system. Um, uh, the how they just introduced again this year, another speed monitoring system that would allow, uh, the zones and the speed monitor systems to be put around nursery schools. So it's catching on in, uh, uh, the whole state of Maryland. We would be, we would fall under the, uh, Montgomery County, uh, which means bill that means we could put them just about anywhere that's under thirty-five mile per hour. Um, and they also, this morning in the center of Maryland, did a morning rundown. Uh, very Maryland lawmakers highlight the rise in pedestrian deaths at the site of a fatal crash in Wheaton, Maryland, where a fifty-nine-year-old woman was struck a pedestrian crossing the street. Um, they're concerned about the rising number of deaths taking place in our region. Last year, as an example, last year, Montgomery County saw forty pedestrian bicyc- bicyclists incidents. This year, in a six-week period, Montgomery County, um, has had over fifty incidents with two deaths already in two thousand twenty-two. And I'd like to remind the council that, um, the warm weather is approaching. The speed's only gonna get worse. And these, these, uh, speed cameras could, we can use as a, any fact, very effective tool in slowing the people coming down because of our situation, situation in Laurel, where a lot of our Laurel community, uh, residential community streets are used as cut-throughs through our city. And, um, uh, back in December, when I introduced this, I know we were waiting on the, um, our traffic in our parking survey, which is supposed to be done in February, so the time is here. It's already the middle of February. And, uh, just to caution everybody, that warm weather's coming, and it's coming soon. And those speeds are gonna get greater and greater and greater. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Councilman Sidnor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just wanna say on February the sixth, we had a city block history program. Want to thank all the council members participating, the mayor, and the high school students that participated, and I guess Speaker State Prosecutor Aisha Braywood participated as well. It was a good turnout, I believe. I think we learned a lot on that day, and still a lot of work to go. Um, uh, the apprenticeship readiness program had three information sessions. Uh, I attended one of them. Um, as well, attended like twenty people. Uh, total for the three sessions, uh, the coordinator told me over sixty people attended. Majority of them was from the Baltimore area. We did have some people from Laurel and Prince George County area attended as well. So, uh, the classes started on March the fourteenth, April first, three weeks, and, you know, once you finish three weeks, you probably can apply to one of the apprenticeship schools. There are sixteen apprenticeship schools in the area between, uh, Prince George County, Baltimore City, Washington DC, and Northern Virginia. You do not have to apply to the readiness program to apply to one of the apprenticeship program. The readiness program just will prepare you for one of the apprenticeship programs. That's why we highly encourage you, give you an idea of what the construction like is, what's like about. So we're gonna have another, uh, session come sometime in, um, June, so hopefully people anticipate in that as well and get, uh, folks jobs now, or, um, apprenticeship program. I also, uh, attended on my first meetings as an alternate for CAG. Um, it's very interesting meeting. He was talking about affordable housing in the housing shortage in our area, from Montgomery County to, uh, Prince George County to Washington DC and Northern Virginia. Those are the, the drug issues involved, so it was a lot of information shared. I was, uh, a lot of information that I learned a lot, but I was very impressed with that, so looking forward to the next meeting that they, they understand that affordable housing is an issue in our region. And the whole purpose of the CAG and Board of Government is to talk to each, uh, regions to make sure that we have a consistent plan on how to address affordable housing in our area. Um, the mayor probably can share more about it if he's in this report. I'm not, I'm not sure. I just wanna let you guys know that I did attend that meeting, and one of the main topics was, uh, affordable housing in our area and the whole region, matter of fact. So it's my first time attending a meeting as an alternate, so looking forward to learning more about that, bringing it back to the council, my residents here, and see, or, and that's my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Councilman Cole?
Thank you, Mr. President. On January thirty-first, I attended, uh, the police department's year-end review. I wanna thank Chief Hamel and all the staff to help put that together. It was very informative. On February fourth, I attended the MML Young Leaders Conference. Um, they had an hour-long meeting. Um, got to look, meet some of the other municipal leaders from around the state that are under the age of forty. Um, thank you, Keith, for, uh, making sure that we had the Black History Program. That was really good. I enjoyed participating in that. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole, and Councilman Mitchell.
Hey, how you doing? Thank you. I appreciated, uh, Council President Smith. Uh, so on, uh, February third, I had my first meeting for the, um, Person with Disabilities Advisory Committee, which I'm the chair, and I got to meet, uh, Aaron, uh, for the first time. And, um, we have our next meeting, uh, the, the same time, uh, next month, so it'll be the, the first Thursday. Um, and, uh, on the sixth, I appreciate, uh, Councilmember, uh, Sidnor for, uh, organizing the Black History Month program. It was a, a great program and well-attended, had a, a great group of speakers. And, uh, you know, I was happy to be able to perform a poem. And, um, on, uh, the twenty, the twenty-fifth of January, um, I attended an education advisory committee. And I look forward to, uh, attending the committee, uh, this month. Of course, as, uh, you know, the committee gets underway, uh, with work. Uh, because of course, at first, it was a lot of introductions and getting caught up, but I look forward to, uh, the work coming out of the education committee. And that is it. That is the conclusion. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. I'll go myself before I go to Mayor Mo. Um, I'm congrat- uh, I would say thank you to Councilman Sidnor for the Black History Program that you spearheaded here in the city of Laurel. I'm appreciative of it. Um, it was well-attended. Uh, thank you for allowing me to participate as well. Um, looking forward to doing more stuff for our community here going forward. Um, going on to Mayor Mo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, several condolences, uh, to the family and friends of, uh, Mayor Kevin Ward, the city of Hyattsville mayor, who, uh, passed away on, uh, the twenty-fifth. I attended, um, his viewing and, um, it's, it's enough that Hyattsville, it's work they did to, um, give him a, a real nice send-off and, and a lot of nice words about him. He's a fine individual. He'll be missed. Uh, condolences to, um, family and friends of Oliver, of Oliver, uh, Wilford, uh, Junior. Um, he was, um, a member of the, uh, cable television at that time, now Laurel TV, and dedicated a lot of time and, uh, volunteer, uh, work to the, to the city and, uh, also, uh, he was also a part-time, uh, city employee as well. The condolences, as you heard, to, uh, the family and friends of, uh, Joan, uh, Joni Kramer, a former Laurel police officer, served just, uh, about under ten years, uh, with the police department. I think Joni was one of the first, uh, sworn police officers female that the city hired, and, um, she was one of the first three, uh, members of what they called back then the motorcycle, uh, division, and she was the, uh, first female, and, uh, Joni is, I haven't seen Joni in many years, but, um, she was a good friend and always a lot of fun to be around and, and just dedicated to the city, and we appreciate her service. Also condolences to the family and friends of Miss Jeanne Noe, who is a former city employee as well, lived on Montgomery Street for many years. Um, and we wanna wish, um, family and friends of Jeanne, uh, our condolences as well. The, uh, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. It's, as we heard, uh, today's Valentine's Day, so we'll wish everybody the best. Uh, we did have the Mayor's Association of Prince George County. We had the, um, get-together on the twenty-seventh of January, and then on February the third, um, at Laurel Elementary, I did virtually a discussion on local government, and that's all the fourth graders that were there, uh, just a lot of good questions, listened very well, and I appreciate the invitation, um, you know, to, um, give them a, uh, talk about local government, the city of Laurel in particular. Um, so, uh, wish them the very best as well. We told them and reminded them about the mayor's uh, contest for, um, that they could be, uh, involved with, so we're hopeful that some of them will get involved and, and write an essay as well. Um, to, um, all that participated in the Black History Month kickoff. I thought it was very well, um, put together, a great program. And, um, most importantly, I wanna thank all of those that signed on to take part and the residents that were watching, uh, as well. As you heard, the, um, we had our monthly Board of Directors meeting virtually for, uh, the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, uh, where we are discussing a lot of, uh, housing from a regional approach. Um, housing as well as, um, affordable housing. Everybody's grappling with the same types of, uh, issues that we are as well. Uh, if you look at the report, and I think I sent that over several months ago to the council, um, you'll see that housing needs are still, are still down, um, and as well as the affordable housing, so, um, hopefully, um, if the opportunity, take a look at that, and then maybe at a work session, it might be a good idea to talk about as well. We, uh, had the Prince George County Municipal Social Security Board of Directors, uh, last week. And then I was invited to the, uh, Big Lots, uh, grand opening, the ribbon-cutting and ceremony over to, over at Corridor Marketplace on Saturday, and then Sunday, uh, I was invited to the apprenticeship competition that they had there at the local union hall, um, at Ninth Street, and, um, I stopped by, wished them all the best. Um, and, uh, looked at their, their work that they did, which wasn't one or two hours, which is what I thought it was. Uh, it started at like, uh, eight o'clock in the morning and didn't get done until uh, almost, uh, four o'clock or four-thirty, so the competition, um, was great, and I was happy to present, um, each of them that participate with the city of Laurel pin. The, um, do wanna remind everyone that, um, the American Rescue Plan funds, uh, our program is online. You can also see where the money is being spent. Um, and I encourage you to take a look at our website and, and go to the, the tag for the American Rescue Plan. Um, on that. The, um, we did meet with the, uh, Laurel Board of Trade, uh, last week. Uh, we, um, gave them to go ahead to start, uh, planning of the Main Street Festival, which would be in May sometime, uh, unless they decide to change, but I think that's usually uh, their time of doing it. Uh, we advise them. Hopefully things are moving in the right direction, um, but we need it to, uh, to be smart, uh, as we're planning this, and, um, I have, uh, the, all the best of with the, um, Board of Trade members and their officers of doing things right. They've done a, done a good job, and I know they're looking to try to get this, uh, festival back up and running again. The, uh, one announcement, Mr. President, on February the twenty-first, the offices will be closed in observance of President's Day. Um, and then, um, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Mo. Uh, moving on to agenda item number five, the mayoral appointments to the Laurel Districting and Ward Boundaries Committee. Mitzi Betman, Rhonda Whitley, Rick Wilson, Roy Smith, and Oris Clary. I'll entertain a motion?
Mr. President, if I could, for clarification, Mitzi, uh, would be the chair, and Rhonda Whitley would be the, uh, vice chair. Thank you. I'll make a motion to accept the mayor's appointments to the redistricting commission.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I close my report.
Moving on to agenda item number six, the general public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. President, there's nobody signed up to speak during the general public hearing.
They're gonna open the public hearing at six nineteen PM, and I'm gonna close the public hearing at six nineteen PM. Uh, moving on to agenda item number seven, A, an introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number nineteen ninety-four, an ordinance to amend the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirty of two thousand twenty-two, and to provide an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. Ms. Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Mo. As we discussed at the February work session, um, this ordinance adds ninety thousand dollars to the operating budget, um, in the state grant category. There's fifty thousand dollars for farmers market site improvements, twenty-five thousand dollars to administer a micro grant program for Main Street marketing, and fifteen thousand dollars for, um, an update to the historic district commission guidelines. Um, so again, that would be an additional ninety thousand dollars in the state grants with a corresponding increase to the budget of the Economic and Community Development Department, um, bringing the total to forty-nine million, seven-hundred-five thousand, fifteen dollars. And I would respectfully request if you could suspend the rules to adopt this ordinance so that you can then, um, approve Mr. Love's bid recommendation for the farmer's market site. Thank you.
Director Saylor, we're gonna open the public hearing at six twenty-one, and I'm gonna close the public hearing at six twenty-one PM. Um, can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. President, make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance number nineteen ninety-four.
Uh, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Miss? Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. Um, now, can I get a motion to adopt?
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt, motion, adopt ordinance number nineteen ninety-four.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
I'll concur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Thank you, Director Saylor. Moving on to agenda item number seven, B, introduction of first public hearing on the ordinance number nineteen ninety-three, Neo-Traditional Overlay Concept Plan, number nine-two-four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to approve Neo-Traditional Overlay Concept Plan, number nine-two-four, to develop a sixty-three-unit townhouse community at the properties known as seven-two-two-two and seven-three-zero-two, Conti Road, Laurel, Maryland, two-zero-seven-zero-seven, submitted by Rivera Development LLC, and providing an effective date. I read the title into the record for the first reading. Director Love, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, and a good evening, Mr. President, mayor, and city council members. As was discussed at the February work session, uh, the applicant is seeking a new traditional overlay concept plan to approve the development of a sixty-three-unit townhouse community, which will include open space, recreation area with a totlot, central gathering, sitting area, complete sidewalk system throughout, and the stormwater management. Um, yeah, this is just the first phase of this. They will have to go through several other phases of the project to actually develop the site, um, and get approvals through the planning commission. But, uh, the applicant, it, that's, uh, under the Neo-Traditional Project can't propose modifications to the code for the aspects of the development. They are proposing several of those, but those will be heard at later meetings. Um, that concludes my reading, and the applicant and their team are on the call if I have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Love. We're gonna open the public hearing at six twenty-four PM, and I'm gonna close the public hearing at six twenty-four PM.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President? We do have someone signed up to speak. Um, hold on just one moment, please. Mr. Glenn Brown has asked to speak, so I am going to open the mic for him now. Mr. Brown, you have the floor.
Uh, good evening. Name is, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, I am a resident of, uh, Conti Crossing, and that is, uh, adjacent to where the uh, townhouse development is going to, uh, to be located. Um, one of the things that I wanted to, um, to bring to your attention um, is in the meeting that occurred, uh, on February, or February second, um, it was, it was said by the developer that, uh, traffic study had been, uh, completed or conducted, and that there was no impact to, and there would be no impact, uh, to the, to the traffic, uh, in the surrounding area. Um, I would ask that you, uh, that you really take a look at that traffic study? Um, because I would disagree that, uh, there would be, uh, no impact. As I have been a resident, um, in the Conti Crossing community for, uh, ten-plus years, and since they, uh, since they started doing construction, uh, with the, the traffic light there, uh, there had been, uh, challenges for, uh, residents in our community to exit, um, exit our community as well as make a U-turn uh, at that stoplight, which we are forced to do because we're not able to turn left on, uh, Conti, uh, on Conti Road, uh, coming out of our, uh, development, uh, which is, um, on Arkwood Lane. So I would ask that you really take a look at that traffic, uh, analysis to, um, to, I, I don't know, make it fair for our community or our, our residents in our, uh, in our community? Because we don't feel that it's, um, that it's right that we have to, to travel, uh, a quarter of a mile down the road only to make a U-turn, uh, to get into our development as well as getting out of our development, having to make a U-turn if we wanna go east on Conti at the stoplight, which is at the stoplight, which is also very hazardous. You know, even if we have the green light because we're having to yield to, to car, oncoming cars coming from from Victoria Falls community that are turning right on Conti Road. So I don't know if, if there's a, if there's any, been any analysis done with the number of traffic accidents there or, or, or any other hazards, but I will tell you as a resident, as well as many of my red, fellow neighbors have talked about it, and we feel that with this development, there will be a significant impact to, to the traffic. So I really ask that you really take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak?
Mr. President, there's nobody else.
Second public hearing with possible action at the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two, six PM. Moving on to agenda item number A. Number eight. A consideration of bid recommendation, farmer's market lot improvements at three seventy eight Main Street. Director Love, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. President, council members and mayor. As I brought before you at the, the work session, we are looking to use fifty thousand dollars that was granted to us through the fiscal year twenty twenty one Community Legacy Program by the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development to make a development on the farmer's market lot. What we're looking to do is to add four permanent picnic tables and a shade structure out there at three seventy eight Main Street. We think this department was able to get through the US Communities Contract via the Department of Parks and Recreation. And I kindly ask that we suspend the rules to vote on this today as there are some supply chain issues and it will be a while till we can actually get all, everything in. So if I kindly ask that we award the bid to Cunningham Recreation for fifty thousand dollars. Thank you, Mr. President.
You, Director Love. Can I entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. President, I'll motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's not necessary to suspend the rules on a bid recommendation. Prove the bid recommendation.
Thank you. All right.
And Mr. President, I'll motion to accept the bid recommendation.
I get a second.
I second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Could I ask Mr. Love one quick question, please? I didn't get to read my notes on that and did the company that was, that you're, you're requesting to have the bid, where are they located at?
They're out of Queenstown, Maryland. They were off of the, we were able to run off the Department of Parks and Recreation vendor list off of that.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. Agenda item number eight, B. Consideration of a bid recommendation for the purchase of a two thousand twenty one Ford F five fifty XL stake body truck. Director Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor Mo and council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a two thousand twenty one Ford F five fifty to replace a two thousand four Ford F four fifty in the fleet that has exceeded its lifespan. We have an immediate need for this replacement as the current vehicle has had numerous breakdowns during this season of inclement weather and is no longer dependable. Forecasted repair costs exceed any expected residual value. The department solicited several quotes, including from vendors on state and county contracts. The accepted quote is from Apple Ford of Columbia, Maryland, which has the state of Maryland contract number zero 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 five four five zero four. Based on a replacement schedule, the following vehicle will be removed from fleet and replaced with the new acquisition. Vehicle number ninety four will be replaced with the new twenty twenty one Ford F five fifty stake body truck. The quotes were as follows: Apple Ford Columbia, Maryland, sixty two thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Holman Ford, New Jersey, seventy two thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars, and Bob Davidson Baltimore, seventy four thousand five hundred and twenty four dollars. Funding is included in the FY twenty two CIP Fleet Replacing Program allocated through ordinance number nineteen seventy one. The net cost for this vehicle would be sixty two thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. It is recommended that the purchase of this vehicle be approved in the amount of sixty two thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars to Apple Ford of Columbia, Maryland for the purchase of the twenty twenty one Ford F five fifty stake body truck. And I'm available if you have any other additional questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Lee. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to award the bid to Apple Ford in the amount of sixty two thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
Right, can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. All right. If there's no further business to come before the council tonight, this meeting is adjourned.